Well, this morning, I'd like to congratulate my colleague.
Thank you, ma'am.
Quite welcome. And say happy birthday to Roxanne. It's her birthday.
Oh, boy, thanks. Twenty-nine again.
Twenty-nine again.
Ain't life wonderful?
It is, yeah. Before we start, I'd like to take a moment of silence just to reflect. Thank you. We have on the agenda, under appointments, a presentation of certificate of recognition for 9-1-1 personnel receiving Ohio 2001 double gold award. That's going to be rescheduled until next week. Madam Clerk?
Okay, under resolutions, I need a motion to approve the Job and Family Services bills for payment.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Transferances?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
There are no advances this morning. Requisitions?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
None.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Approving bills for payment?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Like to authorize various personal actions as indicated on the summary for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Like to approve and enter into the purchase of service contract amendment number one with Goodwill Industries of Lorain, Ohio, for education and training services for the OWF recipients effective May 9, 2002. This amendment will increase the contract value by $20,000 with a total contract value not exceed $70,000. The number of participants to be served will also increase proportionally to the value of the contract and all other provisions of the contract signed on November 13, 2001, by resolution number 011002 remain in effect. Need to authorize the Vice President to execute on behalf of the Board.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Like to publish notice of a public hearing to be held on Thursday, June 6, 2002, at 11:00 a.m. for the Crocker's Landing subdivision Columbia Township detention basin maintenance costs. Rich Behr, the developer, has requested that the detention basin and outlet pipe for the subject subdivision be placed on perpetual maintenance in accordance with the Highway Code, section 6131.63. The detention basin has been constructed for 40 lots in the subdivision, and sublots 1 through 5 are not included in the maintenance schedule because they do not receive benefit and they discharge their stormwater directly into Plum Creek. Each subplot benefiting from these drainage items shall pay their prior share by acreage, which amounts to 5% of the total construction costs of $41,670 and is $2,083.50 per year to be paid by sublots 6 through 45. This money will stay in an account through the county auditor's office, which the engineer would use for any repairs or maintenance. Each year, the engineer will inspect the facility and prepare an annual report. The maintenance fee collected each year will depend on the engineer's report of work needed and funds available. The balance in the account cannot exceed 20% of the original cost of construction.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Like to advertise for bids to furnish all labor, material, and equipment for rehabilitating Chamberlain Road Bridge number 0049 in Lorraine County. Notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on May 15 and 22, 2002, and bids will be open on Wednesday, May 29, 2002, at 2:30 p.m. They'll be in the public hearing room.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Like to advertise for bids for the city of Sheffield Lake, their community center, a community development block grant-funded project, estimate of cost $19,000. Like to publish notice in the Morning Journal on May 15 and 22, 2002, and bids will be opened on Wednesday, May 29, 2002, at 2:00 p.m. here in the public hearing room.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
I'm going to apologize, number 14 is the same as item number 10, so we don't meet number 14.
Ah.
I get on there twice. Number 15, like to issue the following notice to proceed letters for these various projects to America Coring &amp; Sawing Incorporated of Lorain, Ohio, for the Garfield Road Bridge number 0235 project effective May 13, 2002, and to Diamond Head Construction and Maintenance Corporation of Westfield, New Jersey, for the Grafton Road Bridge number 0396 project effective May 13, 2002.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Like to receive the amended petition and map for proposed annexation of approximately 1.1867 acres in Grafton Township to the village of Grafton, Ohio, Robert and Marcia Faboro petitioners. The submitted petition and map reflects a correction in the legal description and change in acreage. The county engineer has reviewed and by report has indicated no discrepancies. Like to schedule the public hearing for Thursday, July 25, 2002, at 10:30 a.m.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Mr. Ennis.
Yes, I was thinking the same thing. Go ahead.
Are we under the new or the old regulations with respect to this annexation?
When was this filed, Roxanne? These were ones that were filed.
Well, this has been done a couple, Chinese has been amended and changed and...
Right. This was originally filed within the period in which we were going under the old law.
Right.
Thank you, Jerry. So from now on, we'll be under the new law?
Anything new filed at this point, that's how we proceed.
Okay. So moved. Second.
Can we have more discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Like to advertise a notice to contractors for handicap playground equipment for the Maud Meeting Park at 960 Cleveland Avenue, Amherst, Ohio, a community development block grant-funded project, estimate of cost $29,900. Like to publish the notes in the Morning Journal on May 21 and 28, 2002. Bids will be opened on Tuesday, June 4, 2002, at 2:00 p.m. in the public hearing room.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Like to authorize...
I would like to ask a question. Excuse me. The CDBG money, Erie School has several disabled children in there, and they're looking to put in addition, well, they're going for the second phase of a playground, and they need some new equipment.
Where is the school located, my city?
Erie?
Yeah.
Erie School.
Commissioner?
Yes.
They're located in Elyria?
Yeah, they're in Elyria.
Yeah, they're located in Elyria. Then they have to go to the Community Development Department in the city of Elyria.
But...
But that's an eligible activity, CDBG activity.
Okay, I'm just wondering, does the area have to be eligible, or just the children in the school?
The children in the school. They're going to be, if you, all they have to do is say that they want to purchase ADA handicap playground equipment for that particular school, for those children. They would do that under the removing of barriers, right? Yeah. But the removal of architectural barriers is no longer an activity. They've changed the title of the activity.
What is the title now, Ms. Kelly?
It's ADA handicap equipment.
Okay, thank you. But it has to be done through the city of Elyria?
Yes. I just found that out yesterday at the training.
Well, we're still glad you went to change that.
[laughing]
When did they change that title? Thanks for bringing that to...
Yes, they postponed it. No, okay. Okay.
Boy, we're really correct. Okay, thanks. I'll call them and let them know.
Okay.
I think it's a good motion on that, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay, it authorizes salary increase for Alex Jazinski Jr., magistrate, Lorain Municipal Court, effective retroactive to May 5, 2002, for longevity pay. The bi-weekly rate will increase from $861.30 to $861.59, and this does reflect the county's two-fifth share.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Like to approve and enter into lease agreement...
Can I say something, please, about that?
Yes.
I assume that comes to 2/5 cents that Mr. Jazinski is getting from the county's two-fifth share, which comes out to about $7.54 a year, if my arithmetic is correct. I sure hope that... Let me tell you, your books can take care of that effectively.
Thank you.
Probably, but you realize that two-fifths is the county's obligation, but the city has a three-fifth share, and they sent us the paperwork and the request. I mean, you put it all together, it's a healthy income.
Like to approve and enter into lease agreement between the Board of Commissioners and the Elyria YWCA at 318 West Avenue, Elyria, Ohio. The YWCA agrees to lease to the county the use of a parking lot consisting of 20 parking spaces located between Third Street and Holly Lane. The agreement is effective May 13, 2002, for a period of three months, ending August 13, 2002, with an option to automatically renew for an additional term of three months in the amount of $300 per month, that's $15 per space. The agreement does contain a thirty-day written cancellation clause. Like to authorize the Vice President to execute on behalf of the Board.
I'll so move. Second, but I would call on Jim to explain this, because we went through this once before. What happened to the change here?
Well, I think in everybody's excitement to try to resolve some of these issues, we had a communications breakdown. While we clearly thought that we were moving ahead on a proposal that had gained the support on, from the other side, we moved a little quickly for that. And upon revisiting the issue, we were able to overcome some of the obstacles that presented themselves on the original proposal. This is not the same as the last time we had. I want to say, Karen, we have 30, 29 the first time?
39.
39? So we got about half the lot this time. I have some minor concerns, but the reason we did it for three months and then on a renewal is to see how it works out, because it's going to be hard to cohabitate in that lot. So this is a pilot for us. It's going to be a test. We really need these spaces, Commissioner. The adult probation people right now are playing musical chairs with the cars for lack of another term, as far as where they're parking, and we're going to run into some issues. This is not a long-term solution. We're still going to be looking for long-term solutions. This is a stopgap, because we can't, we don't have a long-term contract, and we don't have the whole lot. I have some concerns on maintenance and snow removal, and who's going to do all those things in the lot? It's pretty hard to plow half a lot, fix half a pothole in the lot. So we'll be exploring other avenues, but this will get us over some of the hurdles we have right now temporarily.
This is primarily for adult probation employees.
There'll be some from clerk records and some from adult probation.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
And Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Okay. Like to authorize an extension of time to South Shore Community Development Corporation to complete the project now in process relative to the state of Ohio Takeout Loan Commitment Project. South Shore Community Development Corporation records indicate the two-year construction period with Key Bank expires in June 2002, and the state Takeout Loan Commitment will take effect at that time. The 25% guarantee for the city of Lorain and Lorain County will also take effect. South Shore Community Development Corporation requesting extension of time from June of 2002 until December 31, 2002.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Like to award the following contracts for the construction of the Lorain County Justice Center and authorize the issuance of the notices to proceed letters for these contractors effective May 13, 2002. First item, to Fair Weather Roofing Incorporated of Avon Lake, Ohio, base bid $373,225. Alternate number one, $13,225. And this bid package, 7A roof and metal panel, totals $386,450. Carroll Glass and Maintenance of Brexville, Ohio, base bid $1,636,538. Alternate number four, $42,200. Bid package, 8A aluminum framing and glass, totals $1,672,200. To Norman Security Groups Incorporated from Montgomery, Alabama, base bid $486,395. And this bid package, 11A detention equipment, was totaled $486,395. It's the recommendation of RP Carboni after consulting with the architect that the above awards are the low bidders qualified and able to perform the work necessary to complete the project.
Were there any local bidders for the glass and the security?
No, Commissioners.
With all the glass companies we have in Lorain County, we didn't get any local bids?
Let me back up. That was an incorrect answer. There were local bids, but they were several hundreds of thousands of dollars above the lowest bidder, although there is a local preference content in the glass bid. Do you remember the figure on that?
What does 10% mean? 10%?
10% of the total cost has to go to...
It could be.
Right, so on the framing...
Framing?
The framing in the glass totals, about $160,000, will have to be spent locally on materials or on subcontracting. The roof is 100% local. That was 100% set aside for local. The security group, interestingly enough, we only received one bid. Nobody else bid on that, and there was no local content in the security bid because of the specific unique nature. That's the holding cell bars and things like that in the security area in the lower level. There's not a lot of people that are able to perform that kind of work. Uniquely enough, we only received the one bid. Lorain Glass did bid on this, but I'm calling from memory here, but I think they were about half a million dollars above the lower bidder.
Okay.
We did try.
Thank you.
I'll so move, noting, I think the total's about $2.5 million more in contracts.
More?
The total of those.
Oh, okay.
Two and a half million more that we're adding to what we've already...
Yes.
We have, if my memory serves me correct, I think we only have, right, the two, and one we may not award. We're having a little bit of problem with the landscaping bid, and we may go back to bid on that. The masonry bid, I met with the vendor, the contractor, Ms. Davis and myself, so we'll be able to award that next week. Good local content there. We've been able to overcome some issues with that bidding and keep it on track. Also, I will be recommending to Board very shortly that we go out to bid for our floor covering. We were going to buy it off state purchasing, but we have been told, and we have some information that makes it viable to maybe go to bid, and we can do some local content on that bid and keep some of those dollars here, too, on the floor covering. So we'll be discussing that as we go further into the process.
Are you talking about the carpeting or just other?
Carpeting. It'll be the, we're going to be using recycled dollars, but we will usually use the DuPont State Contract. If we bid it and we mandate local preference, we'll be able to keep some of the work and some of the purchasing materials here in Lorain County. We know what the state dollars are. If we bid it and we're not, it's not aggressive and doesn't, it comes in higher than the state dollars, we can still go to state purchasing and not award the bid. But I think we should take a look at it and try to keep some of our local folks getting some of that work if they can actively compete.
All right, as far as landscaping, is it going to be like the brick squares that we have out here?
The inlay brick will still be there, because the city of Elyria has a requirement for that inlay brick. In fact, we're salvaging the brick, the old brick that's over there now. The landscaping going down the street will fit the new streetscape as mandated by the city of Elyria. It will not be very similar to the streetscape on this side of the building, because they've since changed their requirements for...
But when we're talking about landscaping, Jim, are we talking about like plants?
Trees.
And our maintenance people do it? They've done a terrific job over here.
They have, but as far as coming in and doing the initial landscaping around the building, normally, we have money set aside. It's not just the streetscape. The front of the Justice Center is heavily landscaped to give it that effect. If you look at the rendering, you'll see a lot of landscaping and flower beds and so forth. Our maintenance guys will be very good at taking care of that and so forth, but I think the initial putting in, we may want to stay with a professional company, but we can talk about it, obviously.
Yeah, let's discuss that a little bit, because once they fill the dirt in and stuff, planting the flowers and the trees seems to be...
One part of this package that I don't think our maintenance guys can take on, and it's the irrigation.
The irrigation. Because part of the landscaping, the Justice Center is something we don't have here, and we spend a great deal of time pulling water hose around for. We're going to have an installed irrigation system on timers, and it'll be state-of-the-art. This way, it'll automatically water the flowers and take care of all those issues, so we don't have to be dragging hoses down the street.
And our people can do that?
Not install the spray irrigation. That would come under contract. You know, it's tapped into the water mains on the building, and we have to run plumbing and piping and so forth.
Is that, what were you saying our people can do?
[inaudible].
Oh, okay.
And that's part of the landscaping bid. Plus, in order to do that kind of work in the city of Elyria, we'd have to have a licensed contractor. None of our folks on the maintenance department are licensed to do that kind of work.
But when it comes to the planting, let's discuss that, because I know our people are doing a terrific job on it.
They are. They did. Actually, Lorain Pride Day is coming up, and our folks have been real busy out there making sure the place looks good.
Looks good already.
It does. By the way, we used perennials this year, so that they'll be coming up every year.
Hooray. Gee, progress is being made. I have a question. When a landscaping company puts in shrubs, et cetera, there's some kind of guarantee that comes with it, is there not?
Right.
And I don't know if there's, so look into that as we're discussing it. I'm not sure that there's this thing guarantee if you just purchase it, put it in.
We have time on it. We should discuss it more. You know, we're looking for all the savings we can find, so maybe a co-opted effort. Maybe they do some, and we'll do some, and we'll work together on that.
Okay, thanks.
Great.
I move. Second.
Can we have more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Comments or thoughts, Mr. Cortez, Administrator?
I have one quick report that I received from Ms. Golsky, who always liked to share good news with the Board. I want to read a little bit here and explain this to you. On April 8, 2002, staff from the Bureau of Childcare and Development conducted a technical assistance visit to the County Department of Job and Family Services to determine if the agency is in compliance with state and federal regulations regarding determinations of eligibility for publicly funded childcare benefits to review the agency's contracts with childcare centers and to discuss proposed revisions to Type B provider certification rules. The agency has approximately 160 parent providers, 160 professional providers, and 60 childcare centers that they do contracts with. There was only one error noted during the inspection, and the overall summary said, "Overall, my technical assistance activities determine that your staff continues to do an excellent job regarding compliance with contracting eligibility procedures. We at the Bureau appreciate the quality work demonstrated by your staff." This is by your Department of Job and Family Services. Pass that if you would like to make a copy of it. It's a glowing affirmation of the work that's taking place out there, and I believe that I needed to share that with the Board and the public. And that will conclude my remarks this morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Assistant Attorney Prosecutor, Mr. Ennis?
I would like to request a short executive session regarding an issue of pending litigation.
Okay. Commissioners report.
I have nothing.
Last Friday was a busy day for us, because we had the groundbreaking, but before I went to the groundbreaking, we had the National Resource Assistance Council meeting. This is three county area, Lorain, Huron, and Medina Counties as part of the issue to shoot off, and this is the money that was voted, the Clean Ohio money, and there's 1.7 million available to Lorain County. Last Friday, we authorized $55,000 for Lorain County Metro Parks, $375,000 for the city of Willard, and $21,750 for common ground. That's a total of $451,750. So there's a balance available to us during this year of approximately $1.2 million. So this 11-person committee decided to have a second round of applications. So we are setting a deadline of Friday, September 6, at 4:00 p.m. for the second round of funding, and then the committee will meet on Friday, October 4, to review those applications. So we will be getting some information together and get it on the Internet, How Public Works Commission, and our access to that site. But I thought that was pretty exciting to come up with that amount, and so we're working. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Any old business?
None here.
I have none.
New business?
None.
New correspondence?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Public comment?
Is there anyone here that has a question or a comment?
My name is Robert Kish.
Robert has a new hat today.
Oh, yes. I didn't put it on until I heard the latest remarks.
What does it say?
This was once a two-liter bottle. Right, Commissioner, Billman. And today, we talked about rugs a couple weeks ago. I still haven't got one. Anyhow, even the seventh seeds has changed his model. It's now the Concerned Citizens Cost-Conscious Common Cause Committee, and this park you're speaking, the land and the money that's left is what I consider for a common cause. All can enjoy it if we have parks. I'll put that on handicap. We may make a handicap accessible. Anyhow, I appreciate the remarks by Mr. Cortez here. Or we're going to use perennials. Cost-conscious. I think he was listening. I hope, maybe not. Anyhow, everplace today, Government Appreciation Day. I'll put that on handicap. We may make a handicap assessment. Anyhow, I appreciate the remarks by Mr. Cortez here. Or we're going to use perennials. Cost-conscious. I think he was listening. I hope, maybe not. Anyhow, I will place today government appreciation date. At least that seven Cs do. Somebody said it couldn't be done, not knowing that he did it. Congratulations, Mayor Grace. You are somebody, and you still did it yourself. You didn't let George do it. To all the tax-paying Georges not in attendance, I repeat, those not present are always wrong. Fellow said that died in 1754. Maybe that's why they killed. Let the people think they govern, and they will be governed. I say again, be governed. Not exactly democracy.